Calling meeting to order at 7:34. May we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez? Councilmember Chavez?
Want to come back to him?
Councilmember Viscara?
Here.
Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Protam Man is absent. Mayor Sternquist?
Here.
Going back to Councilmember Chavez?
Apparently I'm unmuted. Can you hear me now?
Thank you. Yes.
Loud and clear, actually.
We can hear you.
Thank you. All right.
Mayor, I'll move to excuse Mayor Protam Man for cause.
Second.
Okay, any objections? So moved. Okay, we move to our pledge of allegiance. Jerry, would you lead us in that?
Sure. Please place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay, no ceremonial items this evening. We move to public items. Not listed on the agenda. I don't have any speaker cards. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Okay, we're going to close public comment. We move to item seven, the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist. I'd like to, staff would like to pull items seven D and seven E for just some minor clarifications.
Okay.
So if you, if the council can consider adopting the consent council, the consent calendar without those items.
Seven D and seven E, right?
Yes, please, sir.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the consent calendar with the exception of D and E.
Second.
Okay, no objections. That's done. Brian?
Roll, roll, roll call vote for the consent calendar, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes.
Okay, so that's been approved except for items seven D and seven E. And our city manager is going to explain why he pulled seven D and seven E.
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist and members of the council. On seven D, I would just like the council to note that we are having some conversations with the state regarding this program and the funding for this program. So in order to continue this program forward, the funding is from AB 939 funding, which is the funding that we get from Athens that passes through to deal with the organics issue. But we're going to try in the next couple of weeks to work with the state to see if we can get the first year of funding funded out of our SB 1383 reimbursement grant that we received earlier this year. But I will not have an answer to that by the time we need to adopt this amendment. So I would just, I just, it's just a point of clarification. As written is what we would like you to approve it tonight because we have that funding. That is all eligible funding for that program. But we may come back to you with a budget amendment adjusting the first year of that programming to the state funding we receive from the SB 1383 state reimbursement grant program.
Okay, and seven E? Oh, do we do them individually? Okay. All right, do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I would move to approve the second amendment to the memorandum of agreement between the San Gabriel Valley Council of Government and the City of Temple City.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
One more, I think. Authorize city manager to sign and execute the second amendment.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes.
Okay. Second item, seven E.
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist and members of the council. One minor clarification point. On the RFP, it is appropriate for us to adjust the evaluation criteria. If you go to, if, on page seven, it speaks of seven, five evaluation criteria in which to evaluate the RFP process. This is a professional service. This is not necessarily something that you're going to the lowest bidder for. So item five, which talks about reasonable of cost, reasonableness of cost and price at 10%, that should be inclusive of, of, that should be removed. And it should be inclusive of item number four, completeness of response, because that gives us the ability to evaluate the, the bidders based on their professional services. And then we can always later negotiate on price if we feel the price is outside of what we, we want to budget or what we want to spend. So we would ask for your approval with that minor modification.
Okay.
And there's no, and I'll speak to this, there's no legal issue with this. It's just more of a practice issue.
And I just see that I left out Councilmember Viscara for the invocation.
We can go right back to that in the field.
No, that's okay.
No, he diligently worked on that, so.
If we can finish this item and then go back, that'd be wonderful.
And then go back, is that okay with you?
Certainly.
I definitely would like to have the invocation.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, all right. So that's it?
That's it, Mayor Sternquist. Thank you for, thank you for allowing me to pull that item and provide that clarification.
Can we have a motion, please?
Sure.
I'll make a motion that we approve item E on the consent calendar with the discussed modification.
Second. Okay, any objections? Roll call.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Viscara, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
I got the gist of it. Sorry.
Your turn. The invocation.
Okay. First time in the pit for this. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Temple City Council. Please join with us in asking for guidance and assistance from whichever God you pray to. The guidance and assistance is for this body as we go about conducting the business of the city in a wise, fair, and thoughtful manner. Thank you for participating in this most basic of democratic processes. That's it.
Thank you. And the council member. Okay, we move to item eight. Public hearing, none. Unfinished business, none. New business, third amendment to city manager employment agreement. City council has requested to review and approve the third amendment to the city manager's employment agreement. And our city attorney, Greg Murphy, will tell us what's going on here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. After a closed session evaluation of the city manager's employment, which was generally positive, the city council directed me to bring back to you a discussion of potentially changing the compensation for the city manager. As you know, and for the benefit of the public, the Brown Act, which governs city council activities, does not allow executive compensation to be discussed in closed session. It must be discussed here in open session so that the public has a chance to understand what it is that a chief executive is getting compensation-wise from the city. In this case, what is being asked for by the city manager and proposed for the council tonight is to first increase the city manager's maximum sick leave accrual to 240 hours. Currently, the city manager cannot carry over sick leave hours from one year to the next. This would put him on the same level as management staff. Second, give a salary adjustment of 5% for this fiscal year. That would not be retroactive. That would be beginning with the next paycheck. And then third, provide up to a 1.5% base salary deferred compensation city match, which again was recently provided both to the bargaining unit and to the, the management staff. If the council does decide to give the 5% increase, the city manager's base salary would move up from a total of 193, 794, to a total of 203, 483. It's worth noting that it's been five years since the city manager has received any cost of living increase in the base salary. And that is, that along with the 5% given to management staff and the bargaining unit forms the basis for proposing it to you tonight. I can answer any legal questions, and I've consulted with Susan Pargas on some of the employment questions. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. There is in front of you a third amendment. We can certainly make changes to it here on the record if, if it's the will of the council. Otherwise, we ask that you adopt it and make these changes to the, the city manager's compensation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any council questions?
No questions.
May I do? No?
No.
No question.
Open the public comment. Any public comment? Okay, seeing none. Close the public comment. I don't have any speaker cards. Any final comments from anyone? Nope.
Madam Mayor, may I just make a quick comment? So I think it's worth noting, Mr. City Manager's, I think that the council had done our review and like the, see, the attorney said, you know, it's a positive review. And we appreciate what our Mr. City Manager had done. And worth noting is that for the five year that he did not get a cost of living adjustment, staff had been getting, I think in that five-year time, I think twice, two colas. So, and then during that time, actually, I think Mr. Cook did not ask and the council did not give either. So I think it's a long due with all the crazy inflation out there. Staff been getting, I think across the board, you know, it doesn't matter what our jurisdiction, other jurisdictions and private industry or not, most people are getting cost of living adjustments. So I think what we have presented tonight is a pretty fair, I guess, compensation for, for the work that Mr. Cook has done.
Okay. All right.
And I, if I may, I would tag on to that. I, I do think it's fair and maybe a little overdue, so congratulations. Although it hasn't been approved yet.
Just want to share with the public that it was a very thoughtful and engaging process, the evaluation. We had a lot of participation from the council and from our city manager. And I think everybody was in consensus that, yes, this compensation was overdue. So we're happy to pass that on to you, Brian. And thank you publicly for the great job you do. Okay. Oh, Tom, I keep forgetting you're here, Tom. I'm so sorry.
All right, I'm listening. I'm, I'm okay.
Do you want to say anything, Tom?
Thank you.
I'm still looking for your picture.
No, I know. No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Keep reminding.
Yeah, so.
Okay, can we get a motion, please?
Certainly. Let me go back to the top of this thing. So, Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the third amendment to the city manager's contract. And approves the appropriation of $14,495 from the reserves of the general funds for fiscal year 2023.
Oh, I'll second that.
Okay, any objections? All right, hearing none. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes. Okay, that's been approved unanimously. All right. We move to item B, a budget increase for Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department Services in fiscal year 2022, 2023. City council has requested to approve a one-time budget allocation from the general fund to provide added resources and to supplement the current law enforcement service in Temple City. And before we have that presentation, I just want to thank Brian for being extremely diligent and quick in being responsive to the council when we suggested that this is something that we would like to bring forward. So Brian, if you would please?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Sternquist. And with us tonight is our station captain, Captain Reyes, and part of our, the three members, actually, they're all three here, of our dedicated team. And of course, Mr. Orzumi, our steadfast public safety supervisor, who I, I have to say, I, I've worked in two contract cities. I know a little bit about one other. The civilian and sworn cooperation that we have is, I will say, is unparalleled in a lot of contract cities. And it's due to these men here and the men and women at the Temple Station that that, all, all credit goes to them in every way. So tonight, we do have a budget request for an additional $75,000 of overtime. Couple reasons we've brought this forward. One, there is, there is an uptick in Part One crime. It is not, I would not describe this as a crime wave, but there is a small uptick, uptick in Part One crimes. That is throughout the county of Los Angeles, hitting everyone. Our overtime-
Could you explain just that for the public?
Sure. And I'll, and I'll, I'll let, I'll let Captain Reyes chime in as well. Part One crimes are the more serious crimes that, you know, burglaries, assaults, those kind of things. There is a small uptick compared to where we were before. I know that there has been some concern about some more hope, high-profile issues that the city has been dealing with over the last, I'd say, two months or so. That includes a attempted murder north of City Hall here and some illegal gambling operations, which the captain will touch upon in just a few moments. So, but with that being said, just operationally for us, the, the additional, we, we budget overtime to provide flexibility for both our dedicated team and who they really work with, with the captain, to work in our city. This additional overtime is going to be split between a couple of things. One is some additional patrols that will be worked with, that will be under the direction, obviously, of the captain. But the dedicated team, along with Mr. Orzumi, they will be handpicking some folks to, who know the city well, who know the areas, working with the station's crime analyst, and the trends that our dedicated team, who are on the ground, know are happening and, and targeting those. So we're thinking about, as, as the holiday season comes around, doing some targeted patrols there. The other, the other issue that we, we will be addressing too is traffic. I know there's always a little bit of frustration sometimes about a motor deputy, but there are only two motor deputies in the entire Temple Station that service two cities right now. And we can go back to that during a budget discussion about a motor deputy budgeted for the city. But a motor deputy, as when Corone Jacobs was captain here, we went to an overtime structure so that we could have that dedicated de, that motor deputy for the specific times we, we need them. The overtime budget also allows for us for, to have flexibility to backfill for our dedicated deputies and other deputies. Our dedicated deputies that we hire are called non-relief, meaning that we budget, we, we were billed for them 40 hours a week regardless, and say, one of them's out on vacation or anything else. We don't have that backfill. That additional overtime provides some flexibility. Our team works really hard. They, 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 they work extremely hard. Anytime we ask them to do something extra, they're there. This $75,000, along with the other funding that we have, provides us with that flexibility, not only for this team, but not to burn this team out, but also provide team members that we know. For, I'll, I'll give you an example. Deputy Anchondo, he was, before he became on the dedicated team, he was on patrol in Temple City for several years, understood the city. And, and the captain eventually selected him because of his intimate knowledge of the city. So where we're going with this extra funding is along those lines. So with that, we, and understanding where the perception of the public is, is well, as well right now, and seeing some extra, you know, patrolling on the street, those kind of things. But a combination of targeted patrolling, targeted areas that the dedicated team, along with our crime analyst and the sheriff and our captain, know about that's happening in our city. And additionally, additional traffic enforcement that we will, we will contract out for. We will work, and the captain will be working in as much as he can with our two motors that the station does have to do additional overtime in the city as well. So that's kind of our overall, if I was to go 40,000-foot level approach. Mayor Sternquist, if it's okay, I'll, I'll turn it over to Captain Reyes. And I know some of you may have some questions as well. Turn it over to Captain, and welcome to Captain Reyes for the, I think, first time presenting in person.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Sternquist and members of the city council, Mr. City Manager. We were approached with this additional funding and potential overtime, and I agree with the city manager that it's best to have, if we're going to do it, to have deputies that are vested in the city that have worked patrol. And that would come from the, the SAO deputies that you currently have. They know the players. They, I would allow them to select who they're going to allow to work in the city. Going forward, we have the ability to keep stats and really show what you're getting for your money, because I think that's important. Much like, I mean, we keep stats on everything anyway, but we can narrow it down specifically to what those overtime deputies are doing. And as we all know, just a radio car in the city is, is a deterrent all by itself. We never know the crimes that are prevented just because of a deputy's presence alone. Not to mention, like the city manager said, our crime analyst has the ability to tell us a specific reporting district is, is having a burglary problem. And they're generally occurring at, at night shift on Tuesdays or on Saturdays. We can target those specific locations at their specific days and hours to increase our chances of catching these thieves. And earlier was asked what a Part One crime is, and basically, it's the felonies, like homicide, rape, aggravated assaults, robberies, burglaries, theft, grand theft auto, and arson. Now, in Temple City, your burglaries are up, much like everywhere in Los Angeles County. So it's not, not an alarm, like we got a problem just with Temple City. It's going on everywhere. But with the additional resources, we can target these crimes and hopefully have an impact in reducing them. And along the lines with traffic, we could, you know, a, a traffic deputy is out there enforcing traffic laws, but they're also giving citations to those that need a citation. And it's helping us identify people that are coming into the city. And the word gets around, don't go there because that area is hot because deputies are out there working. And the more deputies that people see, the, the crooks are going to go elsewhere. So, you know, I, I think it's great if we have that opportunity to work it. Our deputies are already working a lot of overtime at the station, but this team is hardworking and they're ready and willing to work that additional overtime. Thank you.
Great. Do we have any questions?
Yeah, Mayor, I have several questions. Good evening, Captain. Welcome to our council.
Thank you.
I mean, first of all, I'll start with saying you and your team have been doing a tremendous job, and thank you for that. So I, I have basically a few questions that perhaps you can address. Number one is, I think, like the city manager mentioned, a number of fairly major news, crime news that concerns Temple City. And a lot of people ask me, friends and so forth, what's going on with, with the city? So perhaps you can speak to that. And number two is that in addition to the additional patrolling that you will be doing, I thought I heard the city manager talk about maybe working with our public safety staff and maybe doing more patrolling, if I hear it correctly. Perhaps you can elaborate on that. And the last question is that some years ago, we have had some, I guess, Sheriff Department were able to give us some, basically the way we remember, free license-reading cars, right? And then I, you know what the technical term for that. And I know after some years, those cars were old and no longer is in service. So is that some service that we can restore or perhaps explore? Because the way I understand is that those licensed play-reading patrol cars were able to identify stolen cars and other unusual cars in the city. And perhaps they'll be a better deterrent of catching bad guys. So those three questions. Take it, Cap.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. So going to the, the high-profile crimes that made the news, your first question, we had a, a home invasion robbery. And although that's scary in and of itself, the only thing I could tell you is the case was not a typical, just random act, you know, somebody breaks into somebody's home. This was a case that the residents is believed to have been involved in some kind of criminal activity themselves, which attracted that home invasion robbery. And I will tell you that that case was taken over by our Major Crimes Bureau. It's a, it's a, it's a unit out of Detective Division that works these high-profile violent felony kind of cases. And they've already made several arrests, and I haven't gotten an update recently. But last I heard, they already made two or three arrests. And so, you know, that's not a case that the general public should be alarmed with. So that's all I'll say with that. Now, most recently, we had a, a, our SWAT team, our SEB, our Special Enforcement Bureau, that went out to a location to deal with a illegal gambling facility, house that we call Casita. That is going on all over the San Gabriel Valley. Our gangs are, are finding locations to build these illegal casino establishments, and they're doing what they do when they're illegal gambling, drugs, and, and along with that, oftentimes comes other violent crimes. So they were there, and although it, it generated a lot of attention, it, it's a good thing because they made a lot of arrests. It was our Major Crimes Bureau, again, our SWAT team, they took a lot of people to jail. And so to my knowledge, that place is in the process of getting boarded up, and it should not be a problem anymore. So, you know, those go up, and as we learn of them, we deal with them. Your other question was about, I'm not sure I understand it correctly, but about patrolling with our public safety?
Yeah, I mean, in the past, we have like citizens patrol and all that.
Oh, the volunteers on patrol, yes.
Are we going to re-istue that or perhaps we have more?
Yeah, so. Yeah, go ahead. I got you. So with COVID, we lost a lot of our volunteers. We had a total of 15 volunteers on patrol two years ago. Today, we have nine, and they are working in the area. They generally work in the unincorporated areas. But I can get them to, to come out here to Temple City as well. We have two volunteers that are going to the Citizens Academy that will increase our, our program to 11, which is a good thing. So with that, we need cars and stuff like that. But they're also good for, for doing vacation checks. And I agree, that, that is a good resource, and it's free to the city, and it's free to us because they're volunteers. So let me look into that a little more and see where our volunteers are, are deploying most of their time, and maybe we could focus a little more on Temple City. I'll go on that. And then you mentioned our, our cameras and the, on the radio cars. They're Alpers cameras.
Oh, okay.
I believe we only have two in the city, correct? We have two radio cars that are equipped with Alpers. And those work, but I, I'll tell you that the majority of our cars do not have Alpers. I don't know the reason behind it. We're short on radio cars, really, because our department has not been allowed to purchase new cars for quite some time. So as cars break down, they phase out, they get in a car accident, they're inoperable, we lose those cars and they don't get replaced. But I, I'll mention, I think it's a good time to mention, there's another camera system called Flock. And Flock is being utilized by a lot of your surrounding cities. And that is, that operates much like Alpers cameras, but these are fixed cameras that aren't, don't need to be attached to radio cars. Deputies get alerted right on their cell phone. And it is a huge crime investigation tool. We were able to locate suspects and, and identify vehicles and persons with a Flock camera. And so that, that's something that, you know, maybe the city may be interested in looking into, but it's a great tool.
What is the cost of those?
The last I heard, the cost was about $2,500 per camera per year. And I've heard that, you know, some cities, when they buy a surplus of them, in excess of, I don't know what the number is, they drop down the price.
Is it a handheld device?
No, it's, it's a camera that's attached to a city pole high up, and it's, it's- It's, it's a camera that's attached to a city pole high up, and it's, it's, it's operated or it's by solar, solar panels.
Wow. It's like CCTV?
Sort of. It's not closed circuit. It's, it's, it's the internet. You know, it's.
It reads license plates?
It, it's a license plate reader. It, it picks up pictures of cars in high definition. If a car has a Temple City logo, it'll identify that. And it's being utilized to solve a lot of crimes.
Does it, let's say, run that number or identify certain bad numbers and will pick, pick up, you know, stolen cars as that sort of thing?
If there's a, if there's a hit in the system, it'll identify that, and it'll alert the deputies to the last location. And then deputies could start looking in the area to try to find it. And I, I mentioned it earlier, that suspects that are committing these burglaries that are on the rise, oftentimes are driving stolen cars. They're not driving mom's car to commit a burglary.
Exactly, yeah.
Right? They're using stolen cars, rental vehicles, cars that are not necessarily going to tie them to the crime. So, you know, Flock cameras is a great way to deter these burglaries.
So perhaps, Captain, you can work with our city manager and Mr. Arizome to maybe bring back some suggestions for us to consider.
Absolutely.
We can certainly do that, sir.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Tom?
Yeah, I just have one question. I wasn't sure when Brian was talking about this topic. So are we, is, is part of this extra money going to be used to get a motor deputy part time? Or I, I wasn't sure if you said, if you were saying yes or no on that. I know you talked about it, but.
Thank you, Councilmember Chavez, for that clarification. Yes, since there are two motor deputies at the station, Captain Reyes will do his best to see how much overtime that he is willing to, or that the motor deputies are willing to work and allocate it to, to Temple City. So we didn't want to pin down amount of hours that we would be able to commit to that, but we will, we, we are committed to getting some level of motor deputy activity out in the streets with this overtime allocation.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Fernando?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Okay. Um, if there's no further questions, then I'm going to open up public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? No? Okay, closed public comment. Any final comments from council?
Not really, except that it's, I think this is a great idea, and thank you for bringing it, Mayor and City Manager.
Of course.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have a council motion? Thank you, Brian.
Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the budget increase in the supplemental law enforcement services by seventy-five thousand dollars. And then approve a budget amendment of seventy-five thousand dollars in the general fund.
Second, someone?
Second.
I'll second.
Okay. Any objections? Roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes. That passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. I think it was for this Brian over here.
He deserves it.
Deputies. Captain, thank you. Okay. All right. Update from our city manager?
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist. Since the item has been discussed and passed, I would like to thank you as the council for the amendment to my agreement. It is a privilege to sit in this role. My job is one where I work with an outstanding team, I work with an outstanding colleague, and I work for five great bosses and a great community. So it is a privilege to be in this position, and thank you for your continued support. And we look forward to the city continuing to grow and move forward. We have a lot of great things that are coming down the pike in terms of some of the items you just saw tonight that we just put on consent calendar. The council, the city's going to see some significant improvements over the next several years. One of which also is, should be hitting the streets relatively soon. So essentially, you can think of north and south of Las Tunas, about three blocks all the way, and about a core, the downtown core down to about Golden West, we're going to do a significant repaving project with, for residential streets that we have not done for quite a while. We've had, we've been doing our arterial streets, and it's a little frustrating for the community at sometimes to see that. But the reason why we do that is, one, we actually have specific state funding for those arterial streets, and less funding from the state or other sources for residential streets. So this is the first of one multiple phases that we're going to be doing hopefully over the next few years. Just a reminder, though, we do not have enough funding to pave every street in the city, but this will be a major effort. Again, the idea is that the residential streets that are adjacent to the arterials tend to get the most traffic counts, have the most amount of impact to the pavement itself. So that's why you see, and for the residents are going to be impacted. This is, this, the treatment we're going to be doing is not as significant, as disruptive as complete reconstruction, where we're doing something called grind and overlay. So we're essentially grinding about three to four inches of the current asphalt. The foundation is good, and then we're layering over three to four, three, three inches of asphalt. So there will not be, there will be limited times, the street will be, will not be closed down for several days, it'll be more closed down for several hours. When they do the pavement, the timing of that, that may be for about a whole day or so, but it's not as if your, the residential streets will be out for days and weeks when you do complete reconstruction. And we're looking to do that through parts of the city over the next couple, couple of years as well, but this will be a significant portion. I think it's around twenty percent of our residential streets will be paved with the current project that will be coming out in the next few weeks.
Brian, is there going to be a map available online so people?
There is a map, there is a map available online, and we will be going door to door for those and when those, because it's, we'll be in phases on each street. So when your individual street is impacted, our, our trans tech and our staff will be going out, letting people know when we'll be out, how long it'll take, give them some, some parameters on times as well.
Question.
Yes.
What is it that, that, no. When is something going to start being visible, I guess? One of the things I've noticed recently, these, these trucks and guys with the little vests, orange vests on, out in the street with a spray can, I don't know what they're doing, doing something on a lot of the streets. And frankly, that is one issue I am taking more heat on from, you know, I'm always talking about walking my dogs at night and all that. People are trapping me constantly. What are you, do something about these streets? So, so I guess I'm, I'm saying I'd like to have a better idea of, of the timeline and what's going to happen. And are we, and I'm glad to hear you say that, that there's some public notice going out. I think that's really key and important right now.
Yeah. We will definitely get public notice out there. I believe the ones that the folks are seeing with the orange vest, they are probably either, I'll have to double check, but we.
They weren't water guys or anything like that?
No. So what we do is, and Councilmember Mann, if he's listening, is familiar with this too, we do what's called coring. So we check the.
I know what coring is.
Yeah, so we do, so they may be checking some of the corings, but I'll double check as well. I know we did a significant amount of corings just to make sure we were putting on the right treatment, on the right streets. That's why you see places like Las Tunas, which we paved two years ago, still structurally in really good shape. So we'll, we'll all check on that, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Brian, and I just want to share with the public, just because someone has an orange vest on, don't assume that they're working for the city or one of your utilities. Because someone came knocking on my door about three days after they paved up on the end of the cul-de-sac from the water leak, and I thought it was from one of the utility companies. And I, I don't open the door right away, so I went up and he was selling something.
Yeah.
So just be cautious that just because you see people out with orange vests doesn't necessarily, when they come to your door, mean that they are working legitimately for the city or one of the city projects. So just be.
Thank you for reminding, yes.
Just be diligent about that.
And lastly, one, last thing, I won't take up many, much more time here, Mayor. The next meeting will be the first hearing again for the housing element as well. As, as you know, and as maybe some members of the public know, the housing elements and some of our ordinances, we've taken a very aggressive stance, but in a stance that is in compliance with state law. And so I'm proud of the work that they've done so far, but that will be before you, at your next meeting. And we're trying to kind of clear the docket in terms of items. So that's the primary thing you're discussing on that night. There might be some other items on consent calendar, but that's really going to be the primary focus and for your questions, and hopefully get that submitted to the state, and have a certified housing element. We truly believe that based on the minor adjustments that we've made to the housing element, and the planning commission has reviewed, that this is a housing element that the state will approve. But until the state approves it, we don't, we, we can't guarantee that. So that'll be on your next council agenda. Thank you, Mayor Sternquist.
Thank you. There was quite a bit of discussion on the housing element up at contract cities in Lake Arrowhead regarding how many cities are technically non-compliant. So there is a lot of push from many of the contract cities to work with the Housing Department.
I, I'll, I'll just provide one other piece of information only. Kudos to the council and the city staff for the general plan that they adopted, that you adopted, because we have met our arena numbers under, and this is public information, it's in the, it's in the planning, it's in the planning commission document. We have met our arena numbers under this, we, under this housing element. Many cities are not. And many cities, or if they're, if they're not, they're extremely struggling with upzoning and other issues that we are not facing, but we'll leave that to your discussion.
Okay. Thank you. Update from our city attorney, Greg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Three, hopefully quick matters tonight. First, also on the housing topic, there were approximately thirty-nine bills dealing with housing signed by the governor within the last week. We'll be sending a memo, sort of our legal analysis to the planning staff within the next week or two, and then we'll begin to bring some of the key items to the council and the public for your information over the next couple of months. But we always want to strategize that or, or really work it out with planning staff first. Which brings me to our second item, which is Assembly Bill 2097, which among other things very strictly limits the ability to require parking for housing, but also for commercial projects near major transit. In working with staff, we've come to not a final conclusion, but a tentative conclusion that we don't actually have a major transit stop as defined here in Temple City, which means that instead of that bill giving us all kinds of heartache, it's one that we can sort of set aside. We think. We're, we're, we're finalizing, but we think, which is why in approaching the thirty-nine housing bills, I don't want to raise any alarms before we work through things with Scott. Legally, it might be something that I say, oh my goodness, I need to tell the council tomorrow, but if Scott tells me that, hey, actually, this has no impact, then we don't want to alert you or the public or, or, you know, make too big a stink about it. Finally, I know that some of you will be attending the California JPIA conference this week. And I've already briefed you on this, but I'll be speaking at that conference on Thursday, late afternoon, on social media and use of official city social media sites, and use of sites by city officials yourselves or senior staff. We did advise in a, a privileged memo about the Garnier case, which is a, a new, a new case that came out in which a couple of school district officials started deleting comments on Facebook accounts because the comments weren't very nice to them. Seems like a normal thing to do, but it winds up that by using Facebook accounts officially, they had created what's called under the First Amendment, a public forum, and then they were engaging in viewpoint discrimination by deleting comments that were unkind. The end result was, as you can imagine, attorney's fees paid out to the attorneys for the plaintiffs. So the big advice that we're giving, and that you'll hear me speak about in a couple of days, is to have separate private and official social media accounts, work with the city's IT department to turn off comments on official accounts, really make the official account one-way communication, items of interest that you wish to share, but not engage in a back and forth. And I think those are the three items I have tonight. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Greg, I have a question. Today, there was a lot of news about the city council, LA City Council approving to remove the eviction moratorium towards the end of January of next year. And then I started thinking, do, are we still, do we still operate under that ordinance that we have with the eviction moratorium?
No. Quite a while ago, we had looked at what the county of Los Angeles was offering, and it was broader than what the city had. So what we did at that time, and we're now in 2022, so this is over a year ago, the Temple City moratorium expired, and we simply relied on the county of Los Angeles moratorium and said that whenever the county supervisors, because they had said that their moratorium extended into individual cities that either did not have a moratorium or had a moratorium that was less restrictive than the counties. So they were backstopping anything. And so we said, well, then there's no point in having one. Residents, property owners, and commercial tenants would all be best covered by the county because the county is looking sort of on a broader scale, and they're covering us anyway. So whereas ours is disappearing at the same rate that the counties is, which means it is primarily gone now, but there are certain carve-outs that are still active and will be until early spring, and then at this point appear to be gone altogether.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Tom, do you have any?
Yes, I do have one.
Okay.
Mayor Protem, Mayor Protem Mann and I did attend the school district city, city standing committee meeting last week with their members, Board Member Matt Smith and Board Member Donna Giorgino. Also present was our city manager and their interim superintendent, I think, Brian Kathy Saragian, I think it is, is that her name?
I'm remembering her last name. Terosian. Terosian.
Terosian, yeah. So it was a good meeting. Few items on the agenda. One, Temple City Unified gave us an update on their so-called Science Olympiad Tournament. They're hosting a nationwide tournament actually in January of next year. They anticipate about a hundred and forty-four teams coming into Temple City to participate in this one-day event. The reason that it was brought up was, of course, they're going to need some city assistance on parking, especially, particularly on Emperor. And so Brian, both Bryans will be working with the schools, schools to maintain some overnight, not overnight parking, but parking issues that may come up as a result. But more to follow on that. It looks like a great event and, and something that the school is very proud of hosting, or the district's very proud of hosting.
Tom, and what, Tom, what is that?
Go ahead. It's called the Science Olympiad Tournament. It's, I, I, they didn't really go to too many details, although it's sort of like, the way, the way I understood it, it was, you know, a bunch of teams are going to be participating in science-related projects and, and just more of a, an all-day event. And I, I, I think they're going to be giving out probably awards and things like that to top teams. So they're, they're going to provide more information as we get closer, and certainly they would love to have all of us there if we'd like to come and, and not participate, but see what's going on there. So as soon as we get more information, I'll pass that on, on to you guys. Let's see, they've basically, they've said they have a good start to their school year. They've had, of course, the hiccups that everybody does, but for the most part, everything's going relatively smoothly. They did start, as many of you know, their preschool program over at the old Doug Spears Learning Center, and that seems to be doing very well. The big news, of course, is that this Wednesday, tomorrow actually, they will be having a school. The big news, of course, is that this Wednesday, tomorrow actually, they will be having a special meeting, meaning the school board, to announce their new superintendent. So I'm sure Jerry will be there, and hopefully, you know, we'll, we'll get the good news tomorrow evening sometime to see who that person is. They, they wouldn't give us any hints, unfortunately, so. But we'll all get that news tomorrow. See what else. I think we all got the email from Brian regarding their fireworks show for their homecoming, which I believe, Brian, is that next week or this week? I can't remember.
Twenty-first.
Thank you, Jerry.
But they're going to have a fireworks show at, yeah, twenty-first at the high school, which brought up a question for me, and that is, you know, we've talked about other ways of perhaps providing fireworks to our community, and when I mentioned the fact that maybe it's something we could look at for Fourth of July, they, they didn't say no. So more to follow on that. Maybe it's a way of, of having people enjoy the fireworks in a, in a safe manner, so. We had two young ladies in our Tournament of Roses, Pasadena Tournament of Roses.
We're losing you, Tom.
I'm sorry?
We're losing you.
Oh, okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Okay, so I said, we had two young ladies from Temple City High School selected in the final twenty-eight of the Tournament of Roses. Queen and Court, Faith Perez, and also Kiana Lee. Kiana is actually a member of our youth, youth committee. So we're very proud of both of them. Unfortunately, the, the, the final seven were announced yesterday, they weren't in the, in the final seven, but just to get to the, the top twenty-eight is a big, a big deal. I think, I think, I think they start off with over four hundred applicants, so to get to that point, pretty good. So proud of both of them. Brian and staff gave a report regarding the, what's going on in the city. Of course, we let them know about Primrose Park, our new library, of course, what we just talked about earlier, the road paving. There are some still traffic issues at some of the schools, primarily, I think it's Oak that's still having some traffic issues that we're working on. And so I know the city and the staff and the school district are working together on that. We gave them an update of all the new developments that are going to be popping up in the city, and also a little brief talk about the ARCA funds and what we hope to use regarding that. And then last thing, which is I think the biggest, biggest item for me anyway, is that we again have a discussion regarding a joint use agreement put back on the board. And so members of staff from each city and the school district will be looking at that, and we're going to start a discussion to perhaps enter into a joint, joint use agreement. I think Fernando, you probably can remember, you know, we, we always used to have one before, and that, that got away from us a few years ago. So hopefully, we'll be able to work that out between the city and the school district so that we both can get the benefits of, of the facilities that we, we both offer, so. And I think that's about it. So good, good meeting overall, and long time coming. I didn't realize that the last, the last board meet, the last standing committee we had, believe it or not, was November twenty-ninth of 2021. And here it is, what, September, October already? So we've, we've agreed to meet again in January, so we're going to try to get back to the every three months and keep it that way for a while. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Okay. Fernando?
I really don't have anything.
Councilmember you?
No. No report.
Okay. I attended the Contract Cities Conference in Lake Arrowhead, and it was a short conference, but very informative. And the topic was on emergency services. So all the speakers, everyone there, talked about emergency services, and it was very timely for me because I had just had a discussion with Brian that I'd like to see our city work with the school district in unison to really share each other's emergency plans because it's been some time. I mean, Jose Polito was here, and fortunately, we had just completed our emergency booklet when we had the windstorm about a week later. But it's been over eight years now, and I honestly don't remember what my duties were at this time. So I think it's important for us to revisit that, work with the school district, see how we can complement one another instead of duplicating our efforts, because we're going to have to, if there's a, a major earthquake, we're actually going to have to depend on one another, especially if it takes place during a school day. So Brian, if you would continue to look at what we can possibly do as a city to enhance our own emergency plan, revisit it, work with Brian Arizumi, and Brian, you, you did that last time, right, when we did the tabletop exercise? What, what year was that?
Yeah, I don't remember the exact time when it was, but I can give you an update. I'm actually working on rewriting our emergency operation plan.
Oh, great.
And so it is something that we are working on to update, and so once I do have the plan written, it will come to the council for formal approval.
Okay. Happy to know that. And if we could possibly work with the school district to see, or the liaisons, William and Tom, if you could possibly put that on the next agenda?
Yeah, and we just need to identify who from the school. The last person that we worked with was David Jensen.
Tom, are you there?
Tom, are you there? Yeah, I, I heard you.
Okay. So if we could put that on a future agenda?
Sure.
Okay. A couple of takeaways from this, and, and Brian, don't leave yet, Brian, is they had quite a few speakers from Cal OES, and they spoke specifically about, I guess the governor gave twenty-five million dollars to Cal OES to do some programs. One of the programs allows residents to apply for a seventy-eight thousand dollar free grant if your home is in need of retrofitting. I don't know how many nineteen, twenty, thirty, forty homes we might have, but this is available. They come out, they do an assessment if you feel that your home might need some retrofitting, and you apply for this grant. So it's just something that maybe if you wouldn't mind looking further into that, Brian, and then we can let the residents know.
Yeah, were, were they talking about a hazard mitigation grant?
Maybe. I'm, I'm not sure what it, I don't have my notes in front of me, but it, it seemed like a pretty simple process if you qualified. I think the annual income had to be under seventy-eight thousand, but there might be some people who could take advantage of that in our city.
I will look into that, and if you have any information as far as the name of the program-
Okay. I'll send that out to you. And then also, there was, it's Listos. Are you familiar with Listos?
Yes.
So do you want to share? You probably know more about that than me.
So Listos for the state of California has two meanings. Listos started as a program on preparedness. It kind of dovetailed off of CERT, where CERT was a twenty-four to twenty-eight hour program. Listos is a one-day, four-hour to six-hour workshop that started actually in the Spanish community. And Listos has blossomed to be offered in other communities. But for the state of California, they also have Listos as their disaster preparedness. Listos in Spanish means ready. And so their Listos campaign, and so they are trying to increase funding that's available to volunteer programs such as Listos, CERT, which is the Community Emergency Response Team. And so there are grants that they have offered. The city did receive a grant when they first launched the Listos grant, which we purchased our fire extinguisher training system. And so we, we are aware of the grants that are out there, and any opportunity that we can to leverage state funding to enhance our programs, we are definitely looking into those.
So they were there really pushing that cities go after the money, so if you could look into it, maybe there's something that we can garnish from the program to help, help us.
We will try to take advantage of that.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. All right. I think that's it from the conference. Other than Janice Hahn was there, she did a great big shout-out to elected officials, which I thought was very generous of her to do in light of their, not everybody is in support of certain supervisors, especially, you know, some of the public safety people that were in attendance also. But anyway, she said, please take back to all your city councils that you do the hard work day in and day out, and we help them look good. Well, we always say our staff does, so I just wanted to share that. She sends that message to all of, all of you and all elected officials. Okay, I think that's it. And we move then to council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. I think I just did that. Anyway, Vincent, Fernando, Tom, any of you?
Um, no. Just a good shout-out to the, to the car show this past weekend and, and the, what do we call that, Brian? It's a ball festival?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so a great, great turnout. Fortunately, some of you may have heard of an incident that we had at the end, but handled very well by our sheriff department, so that was good. And other than that, it was a good turnout and perfect weather, so congratulations to our staff and school district staff for pulling off a good event.
And I'm sure Jerry will have those pictures on digital. They're already up. Okay. Thank you, Jerry. Okay, Vincent?
Just, just a small thing, and I think just want to point out to the public that for those of you who are following the, all the American Rescue Plan Act funding, ARCA funding, if you will, that the city had recent discussions on. Two items tonight that we approved are really a start of that process, and one for the Lively Park Playground renovation, the other one is to fixing our trailers up front. So thank you to Mr. Cook and bringing this back so quickly after our discussion on ARCA funding, so. More to come on ARCA.
Yes. And with that being said, also just, I'd like to have a full council when we talk about the parking, so I'm going to wait until a couple of weeks and bring that discussion back. Okay? All right. Do we have any additional public comments from anyone? No? Okay, then I'll close public comment. And with that, we are adjourned.